I got one round.
We're supposed to play there in progress.
Yeah.
Actually, the worst at Ridge.
These are three problems. You had to set up because they were too complex.
Let's get a forum here. Yeah, they're here. Waiting to come out. A crowd can surprise.
It's after meeting a lot easier.
Okay. Okay.
And what I brought to you.
I'll call Z.
Yeah, I just saw him. He was just going to do this.
I had to check my hair.
Okay.
He's in.
It's still not there?
Right.
That clock's a little faster now. Say six or two years ago.
I want to see six.
You could have started.
I could have started.
Call the meeting to order. Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Here.
Trustee Dodge.
Here.
Trustee Guera.
Here.
Trustee Rousich.
Here.
Trustee Calandrell.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
President Pico.
Here.
Finance agenda. Item number 201704869750 on the park. Event ordinance number 5201.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Rousich.
I move to approve ordinance number 5201. An ordinance authorizing the termination of redevelopment agreement and ground lease and sale conveyance of village property 9750 on the park metric triangle.
Second.
Before we take a vote, I just wanted Ann to maybe just give a little bit of the background of why we're here tonight at the special meeting. Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry about that. Okay, is that better?
Director Mampi.
Okay, so I'll just give you a little bit of background about how the redevelopment came about and then kind of talk a little bit through the redevelopment agreement. So in early 2010, we started negotiations with Flaherty and Collins to build a approximate 295 unit luxury apartment building. It would have a variety of amenities with it. The parking deck is within the building and it also has some commercial space included. The RDA related to the project was actually approved by the board in September of 2011 and construction began soon thereafter. The RDA was structured in a manner that provided, is that me doing that? That whistle? Sorry.
I want to back up just a little bit.
The RDA provided a unique public-private partnership that allowed us to use our strong financial position and kind of get what we were looking for to kick off the redevelopment of the Main Street Triangle. It provided us with a catalyst for future development and I think you can see some of that there. You see the University of Chicago building.
Switch mics. See if that helps.
You see the University of Chicago building. You see the parking deck. We are about to enter into another agreement for a theater. So you see that kind of development within the triangle and you also see a lot of development around the area that we feel was a catalyst or that the 9750 building was a catalyst for. We've got the Riva development across the street. We've got Mariano's. There's been a lot of redevelopment in the old Orland area as well as some infill developments and redevelopments along La Grange Road in that area. Once again, the financing structure defined in the RDA provided that the village would provide the financing for it. We were able to do that because of our strong financial position. The financing was a $38.2 million loan to the developer, a $25 million incentive and the developer's equity of $2 million. What we did is we went to a bank and we secured a line of credit that we utilized to fund the project and then we also issued taxable general obligation bonds to finance the rest. The balance on the term loan right now is about $22 million and the balance on the outstanding GO bonds is about $36 million. Once again, it was, the RDA was structured in a way that mitigated the risk that we were taking by financing these projects, both the market risks and the economic risks that were related to it. But the RDA had also allowed for us to share in the financial success of the project through excess NOI sharing and through sharing of the value of the building when we ended up being taken out of the project. As time went on, we did begin receiving revenues related to this project. To date, we've received a little bit over $2 million in excess NOI or excess cash flow sharing that's been happening for the last three years. We also received loan payments obviously on the loan and the interest rate on that is over and above what we pay on what we borrowed for this project. So we get that interest spread. The RDA was structured so that the developer could come to us in 10 years and be taken out of the deal if they were able to repay the loan in full. If they weren't able to repay the loan in full, there was mechanism built into the RDA that would allow us to refinance that loan at a to-be-determined market interest rate at that time. If that was to occur, a ground lease payment would also kick in where they would pay an additional $100,000 a year for 10 years for that ground lease. So once again, there was a lot of terms built into the RDA that really allowed us to recoup our investment. Last fall, Flaherty and Collins approached the village with a takeout offer. We did a bunch of negotiating back and forth. I believe it started in about October of 2016. There was quite a bit of negotiating back and forth. There was an offer made. The board did choose to decline it. We renegotiated and they came back with a final offer in May of 17. The offer is $50.5 million. That would take us out of the loan, or I'm sorry, out of the development completely. That would completely repay the loan that we made to them and that $50.5 million as well as revenue that we've collected to date and that we'll collect in the future will completely repay us for the investment that we made in this project plus about $6.8 million. Some of that will be collected in the future through the generation of TIF increment related specifically to this building, but at the end of the day, we'll be ahead about $6.8 million. We hired an independent consultant to confirm the amounts that staff had come up with and we did receive a report from them confirming these amounts saying that they are conservative. And one of the reasons I think that they say they're conservative is we were projecting a 1% increase in increment every year and the consultant that did the study felt that that was a conservative number, but we were just being conservative so that we didn't overstate something and overstate what we would get out of the project. The findings in the report also said, you know, this will reduce our outstanding debt. It'll provide us with cash flow. It mitigates the risk that we have by being in the project. They noted that they also felt that this project really was a catalyst for development, not only in the TIF but also in the TIF area. So by accepting this offer from the developer, once again, we'll be completely taken out of the project. The property, the underlying property which we currently own will be sold to the developer. We'll receive the $50.5 million. Our plans are to pay off the term loan that we have at Fifth Third Bank and the remainder of the funds would be set aside to make the future debt payments on the bonds that are still outstanding. So that might have been longer than what you were looking for, but if there's any questions or...
I think it was very good. Any questions or comments?
Make comments.
Trustee Rousich.
Okay, so I was a brand-new trustee six years ago when this came up for a vote, this project, and it certainly was a bold move by the village. And I'm very glad we're at this point today and we can say that by all accounts, this project was a success. When we made the decision to enter into this agreement, we always considered the fact that our increment financing would be one way in which we would recoup our investment. And with that taken into account today, to be able to say that we are going to be $6 million ahead on this project, I think I just want to thank those members of the board that were back then because I certainly, it caused my stomach a lot of knots to take that vote six years ago, but I'm glad we did as I'm sitting here today. And I want to thank staff for all your hard work. We've been negotiating with Flaherty and Collins for probably eight months now. The former mayor was approached by them and we, it was a long process. It was a long process to get into this project when we contemplated it and, you know, we did a thorough thoughtful analysis which, with staff's help and with the help of outside consultants. Just as a side note, I wanted to say this. So my son is studying at DePaul University, getting his master's in real estate and our project is one of the case studies that he studies or was part of, you know, literature that he studied for his class. So I think even by outside standards, this is, has to be considered to be a successful development and I'm sure other trustees are going to make other comments, so.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Fenton.
I was one of the trustees that was here when we initially investigated this development. Very proud to say and very happy to say that we're able to do this this evening because it was a risk that we took, but we also looked at all of the people who were the experts in the area who advised us to go along with this. And one of our plans when we did decide to do this, to go along with this, was what it was going to bring to the downtown area and to the north side of Orland Park. And by this luxury apartment complex going into the downtown area, it spurred the University of Chicago Medical Center to come in. We were able to build a fantastic parking deck which the University of Chicago, University Medical Center paid for most of it. And we have retail space underneath that. We have an 80,000 square foot mixed-use entertainment center coming into the middle part of it. We also have other outlets that are currently being looked at by other developers. And it also spurred all of the private retail on the other side of, the east side of La Grange Road. We brought in Mariano's, the Riva, a complex with 331 units and also now is reinvesting, bringing people to reinvest in Old Orland. We just last week, a couple of weeks ago, approved some new stores that are going to go in there and making this the walkable community that we had the vision for, for the downtown area. Don't want to continue to call it Old Orland because there's some old and there's some new and there's some future that's out there too. But I think the board looked at it. They took the risk and as trustee Rousich related to the Urban Land Institute is using this in their classes to teach what is going on, we've been recognized by many other suburban areas who are considering different developments like this and are using Orland Park as a successful development. So I hope everybody goes along with, you know, approving this this evening because it's a great thing to do and the fact that we're being able to get out of this even earlier is absolutely wonderful and still making that $6.8 million investment down the road.
Any other comments? Trustee Dodge.
Thanks, Mayor Pico. Just, we'll keep this short and sweet, so it's the right time to exit this deal. If we had stated any longer, given what the Federal Reserve is likely to do with interest rates, then there is a term in this retail, in the development agreement, excuse me, that could have left us in the deal longer. So this is a good time to exit. As alluded to, I think in Ann Marie's report, it pays off. It's paid off, so there's a positive return here as you think about the investment and then, you know, what we're doing here. It reduces the debt, which is always a good thing, so that will be off the book or will address future interest rate payments. And then quite frankly, frees up some other cash flow to do some of the other things that this board has been actively discussing as we think about budgets and strategy. So all things considered, this is a good time to exit this project.
Trustee Guera.
Thank you. Yeah, I was on the board with trustee Fenton, trustee Dodge. And yes, we took a risk, but I was going through all the materials from back then and I found a Tribune story that talked about rentals, suburban rentals. And what they said at that time in 2012, that 95% of rentals in the Chicagoland market, executive-type rentals, were occupied. So that's what spurred the drive and the fire underneath these developments. And then it mentions the other towns that started building at the same time. And we were in good company with Evanston, Arlington Heights, McHenry, St. Charles, Wheaton, Glenview, Buffalo Grove, and I think Oakbrook Terrace. There were many that saw the need and it had to be the right type of apartment though. So we hired housing consultants, I believe there were three, and got their opinion on the location, the type of housing, what would work in this corner. And we took the best advice we had and I think we can now exit, as Jen said, it's the right time to do it. We can exit making a profit and it's a good thing for Orland Park.
Trustee Carroll.
I was not on the board when this was commenced, but I was following it closely and keep in mind, at the time the board did vote to do this, the economy was not doing real well. Jobs were not doing real well and this particular development did bring a lot of construction jobs, good construction jobs and permanent jobs. You look at the University of Chicago Medical Center, how many employees they have. And we were told by their staff how many would come from the area. So I think at a time when our economy was doing very poorly, as other trustees have mentioned, it was a big risk, but it paid dividends and jobs in future development and I'm happy to see it worked out successfully.
Trustee Calandrell.
Just briefly, I don't want to repeat everyone, but like Mike, I wasn't, trustee Carroll wasn't on the board at the time, but this has been a long time working and I want to thank staff. $6.8 million is a pretty good return on profit. I'm sure any bank around here or nationally would take that return on investment. Also want to thank the board who's still here, also Mayor McGoffin for his foresight. I know that board worked so hard on the details of project to get it right because, and as you can see, after four, five years, five years, they got it right. We're getting our money back, we're making a profit, so I just want to give everyone a pat on the back for that. That corner in the last five years has so much success. 9750 waiting list, the entry level rents are extremely high, higher than my mortgage and cost of living right now, $1,400 plus with strong backgrounds and financial checks. So it's a successful project. It's not, it's a very successful project. We have the University of Chicago and I don't want to repeat everyone else, but that corner has been a hotbed of development, which in Illinois is not, it's very hard to find. So again, $6.8 million is a really good return on investment. It's a really good project. And if you think about what this project started with, first of all, the profit we just made or will be making after this vote, I think the board is going to support this all. University of Chicago, the theater project with multiple restaurants tied to that coming up, Crescent Park, all those outcomes, not bad at all. I'm sure if you fast rewinded five years ago and said this is what this project would have started, no one would believe you and would have been very, very excited for that. So I want to pat Mayor McGoffin or old Mayor McGoffin and the current board up here for their work on this because you can see how they're working and they're developing a well-stre, a well-researched, well-planned, well-executed plan for this development. So I think we can't now lose sight of that too. So with that, I hope everyone supports it. It's a great project, $6.8 million. We're being really good stewards of the taxpayers. I think that's a good headline. If I was going to write a headline, it's good stewards of taxpayers' money. We made money for you, $6.8 mil. So, thank you.
Any other comments? So my only comment here, obviously I was not on the board at that time and I think the approach was, and the approach was certainly made well before I was on the board as well. I think the important thing here is what's the decision going forward? What are the alternatives that we face? And as trustee Dodge pointed out, there's interest rate risk. There's other risks that are out there. So at this particular juncture, this is by far the appropriate decision to make is to exit this project. It reduces our debt. It increases our liquidity. It also significantly reduces our risk, particularly because we will no longer own or have ownership interest in apartments or retail facilities. So for that reason, I also support this exit. Now, since we have a pretty crowded, we only have one thing on the agenda, is there any questions before we vote? Any comments?
Can you come up and state your name and then ask the question? On the math, how much was the original bond and how much was borrowed from the bank?
So the total project cost was just over $65 million total, all in construction, engineering, design, everything related to the building of the building. We borrowed, the developer made a $2 million equity payment.
That takes it to 63.
We borrowed $40 million in taxable general obligation bonds and the remainder of it was funded by a line of credit that we established at a bank. That line of credit after stabilization of the project was converted to a term loan and we started making payments on it.
Okay, so you borrowed 40, total was 65 and we're getting 50 million back plus, I'm trying to go the other way.
Okay, so the total project cost was about, was $65 million.
Right.
There's some interest expense on the bonds that adds to that amount.
Right.
We are getting the $55.5 million at closing. We've already received approximately, let me get my numbers really quick, we've received about $6 million in interest spread because they're paying a higher interest rate than what we're paying on our debt. We've also received excess cash flow from the developer over the years of just over $2 million. And then we'll also, over the life of the project and the remaining life of the TIF, we've received some of it already and we'll receive the rest of it going forward, TIF increment of about $16 million. So when you add all of that together, that pays back everything that we borrowed plus generates $6.8 million additional.
So basically on the sale, we couldn't retire the bonds because we don't have enough money to do it?
Well, they're not callable is the real reason. If they were callable, we would take some of the proceeds and retire what we could, but they're not callable. So we'll retire the debt that we can, which is the term loan at the bank, and we'll set aside the funds to make the debt service payments as they mature. They actually mature in 2020 and 2021.
Okay, so what is the net loss or gain on the investment you propose to do with the money of the bond versus what we have to pay on the bonds? That's what I'm trying to get to is you're taking in money, you're going to pay back money, you're going to have money sitting in your bank account. What are you going to do with that money?
Well, the remainder that we receive will sit in our bank account.
It's about 30-plus million dollars.
It's about 29 plus.
29 million, yeah, okay.
So that will earn interest over time, not as, not a super high amount because obviously as a municipal government, we are limited to what we can invest in. But that principal amount that we have left as well as the interest that it earns over time will be utilized to make the debt service payments. If the final year comes and we are short in any way, we will utilize our home real sales tax to make the debt service payments just like we always have.
Okay, so what is our, what is our interest rate on the bonds?
Our average coupon rate on the bonds is about 2%.
Okay, and what do you anticipate the investment income to be on the cash?
Our investment rates now, like I said, we are very limited on what we can invest in. We can invest in CDs, savings accounts, we can invest in treasuries and agencies. So there, it is a little bit under 2% at this time, but that doesn't mean that it'll remain that going forward, but the bond rate won't change. It's 2%.
So we're at a net loss until the, until the Federal Reserve?
Not necessarily.
Well, if you're taking in that money and investing in less than what we're paying out, what would you call it?
Excuse, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I can just point out, one thing you're not taking into account is the increment that we're going to be receiving and continue to receive, which if you took that into account, that would offset...
Well, what I will point out is if you called this meeting and put these numbers up, so we're not all sitting here guessing, call an emergency meeting, don't tell anybody about it, don't put any of the numbers out so people could actually look at it before we came here. Now you're asking me to speculate on an if, if Tuesday it doesn't snow.
So let me, can I, can I try and simplify? I'll just try and simplify this a little bit. Thank you for your comments. So I think, so what we're looking at here is, you're looking at, we lent 63 million, we're getting 50.5 million back. There are, there is some interest rate spread. There's also some, there's also some excess cash flow sharing. The, so you're, you're correct, without factoring in the TIF, the increment, the investment we've made is about $9 million. That's about how much money that we're short. But there is a TIF increment of $16 million, which is the property taxes generated by that property, which will be, which will be generated through 2028, that covers that difference. Did that summarize it pretty well?
Yeah, I mean, there's, what we have here, we show the total investment in the project plus all the interest that we're going to pay on the debt and we add all of that together. Then we generate all the revenue from the project and we have that $6.8 million remaining. I talked a little bit earlier about being conservative on estimating our future increment. We're not increasing it historically what, now it's going to get complicated, what EAV has increased by, which is what our increment is based upon. So we're conservative.
But it's $16 million in that increment?
Yes, the funding is there.
Okay. So I think that's what, I think that's what we were trying to get, what you were trying to get at. And then the other question I think that was buried in there, just correct me if I'm wrong, is we've got 29 million sitting. How much is the loan that's outstanding that we're, we're going to use that 29 million plus the investment money plus the TIF to pay that off?
Right, so the loan that's outstanding at the bank that we're going to pay off, and we talked about this at earlier meetings when we presented this to the board, is just over $21 million. So we'll pay that off in full two days after closing. The bonds will remain outstanding and we'll pay those every year as the bond payments come due.
Correct. What's the total, I think the question he was asking buried in there was what's the total bond payment?
The outstanding principal is about $36 million.
So the 29 million we have left over plus the interest that we get on that plus the TIF.
The increment that we get in the future.
The increment that we're going to get over the next four years is going to cover that 36 million. Is that correct?
That's about how much money that we're short. But, there is a TIF increment of sixteen million dollars, which is the property taxes generated by that property, which will be, which will be generated through 2028, that covers that difference. Did that summarize it pretty well?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, what we have here, we show the total investment in the project, plus all the interest that we're going to pay on the debt. And we add all of that together, then we generate all the revenue from the project, and we have that six point eight million dollars remaining. I talked a little bit earlier about being conservative on estimating our future increment. We're not increasing it historically, what, now it's going to get complicated, what EAV has increased by, which is what our increment is based upon. So, we're conservative.
But, but it's sixteen million dollars in that increment?
The funding is there. Yes, the funding is there.
Okay. So, I think that's what, I think that's what we were trying to get, what you were trying to get at. And then the other question, I think, that was buried in there, just correct me if I'm wrong, is we've got twenty-nine million sitting, how much is the loan that's outstanding that we're, we're going to use that twenty-nine million plus the investment money plus the TIF to pay that off?
But, right, so that, the loan that's outstanding at the bank that we're going to pay off, and we talked about this at earlier meetings when we presented this to the board, is just over twenty-one million dollars. So, we'll pay that off in full, two days after closing.
The bond that we can't call?
The bonds will remain outstanding, and we'll pay those every year as the bond payments come due.
Correct. What's the to, I think the question he was asking buried in there was, what's the total bond payment?
Uh, the outstanding principal is about thirty-six million dollars.
So, the twenty-nine million we have left over, plus the interest that we get on that, plus the TIF...
The increment that we get in the future.
The increment that we're going to get over the next four years is going to cover that thirty-six million, is that correct?
Yes, and when we issued the bonds, the notion was that if revenues were not available that were generated from the project, that we would use home real sales tax. So, if we absolutely had to, that's what we would do, but all projections say that there's going to be enough to make those debt service payments are full.
You anticipate the TIF is going to cover it?
Exactly.
Correct, okay. Well, I, let's get someone else's question.
If they do the property tax, what does that do to the small city? You're talking about TIF, the incremental property value increases, and if the guys, Springfield finally do property tax, it's like you're arguing for five years, does that change the number?
I don't think that has an impact, or it's negligible.
It's a net, yeah, it's very negligible, yes.
Okay.
And our levy has remained flat for a number of years already, and we've seen that generation of increments, so...
Can we sell the building? Can we get an appraisal of what the building's worth and sell it?
We don't, we don't own the building, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, come up and state your name, for the record.
My name's Pat Corr. But I'm just wondering, you know, we put sixty-plus million dollars into this project, and we're only getting fifty-plus future money. You know, we don't own the building, there has to be some kind of buy-sell agreement where, you know, someone knows how much this building is worth. Maybe we're agreeing to terms, and I know we've been negotiating in good faith for some time, maybe we're agreeing to terms where we can get more money from an outside buyer. We don't own the building, but we guarantee the debt. Okay, so it just feels like a, like, you know, a one-way deal where there's no benefit for us. We did this to develop the property, in my mind, the property is nice, but it didn't create the kind of walking community we all anticipated. I think the University of Chicago building is a monstrosity, okay? And I don't care about what, what kind of future money it's generating. We were sold on this, I was at all the village meetings, it was not a unanimous board decision to push this forward. It was not, it has not gone as projected. I don't think it's walkable, it's right up on the street, the University of Chicago building with that huge parking lot. I don't think this is the jewel that Orland Park sold us on when they went forward with the ninety-seven fifty project.
Trustee Gera.
If I may, I mean, we, there's many opinions, many people disagree with you, we're all have our own. I, I think you have to think of this as we cited so many times, we're the mortgage holder. We don't own the building, we're the mortgage holders. So, it's, would be much like the bank saying they're going to sell your house for a better offer. We, correct me if I'm wrong, and we're, we've made money over the time, they've been making payments, we've been getting property taxes, million or two already just in taxes. And the driving force in that development, I, I think you can see where we can't sell the building, they own the building, we're, we're their, they're mortgage holder. And we're just closing out on the mortgage, much as you would prepay your mortgage, that's all it is.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry, one more last question. You know, you talked about the two million dollar investment that the developer put in, okay? Let's really talk about, there was really only one million dollars out of his pocket, he was also paid a million dollar development fee by the bill. So, this looks like the greatest deal, just in my mind, in the history of man, where someone could put up a million to two million dollars and get a fifty million dollar plus building or a sixty-five million dollar building. Just looks like the greatest deal in the history of man. And I don't know all the terms that were involved in this, I wasn't involved, and I appreciate, and I think we all appreciate all your effort, but let's not confuse the effort with the accomplishment. It looks like we're losing, just, you know, if I cut through the bushes here, like we're losing six to nine million dollars. The TIF money, which you're projecting in the future, we would have got for any building or any project we put there, we've got money in the future.
No.
I just think we moved kind of prematurely.
I, I would, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Gera.
I would disagree. It, it is an engine, if it weren't for that. You may not like the University of Chicago's building. Do you dislike the fact that they're here and we have that level of health care available to our residents, those quality jobs right here in the village? And there's more to come, it, it's an economic driver.
You know, I can't, I can't speak to any of that, there's doctor's offices all over the village, okay? That, that's, that's kind of side part issues. You know, we're not, we're not talking about economic development, we're talking about economic development of the downtown area. This is going to be someone who drove into Orland Park would be proud to see what we put up, okay? I'm not saying I'm not proud of it, okay? I'm just saying that I think we acted a little prematurely, I wasn't in any of those meetings, but, you know, it is what it is now, you know, and maybe you all should take a more pragmatic view of this one, yes. I, you know, I appreciate what you're, what you all doing, but I just think that this deal, at its inception, was pushed forward, there were many people in the village who were against it. And I think that we should have gone more slowly and witnessed that, okay? And allowed the economy to grow. And, and I want to say a more sensible approach, but a more conservative approach, they didn't get us on the hook for six to nine million dollars. That's just my personal feeling, there are a lot of people with strong feelings. At that time, there were a number of trustees who voted to wait, okay? And let's wait and see how things turned out, and it got pushed forward and there were a lot of people in the village who didn't want the project. So, so I, you know, I'm not speaking for anyone other than myself, so...
Sir, in the, in the back corner, if you want to come up and state your name?
You go ahead, you know, I guess if you want, you'll step to the back corner.
Yes, please.
Anyways, my name is Patrick Corr. I'm from Traverse City, Michigan, where the sales tax is six percent. I own a house on Lake Huron in Michigan, assessed at the same value, appraised at the same value as my house that lives here on Long Run Drive. I just got my tax bill, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. I just got my tax bill from Michigan, one thousand three hundred and eighty-five. I'm leaving Orland Park shortly. My wife and I are selling, we no longer can afford you people, it's ridiculous, the kind of taxes that you poor people have to pay here in Illinois. I'm, I'm ashamed that I lived here, I'm ashamed that my wife unfortunately has family here, so that's the only reason I'm here. But, like I say, hasta la vista, because I can no longer afford you people.
Trustee Dodge.
Appreciate your sentiment, I appreciate the sincerity of your sentiment, but you are so far off base, you might as well be on Pluto to say, "You people." We didn't create the Illinois economic and climate that's caused everybody in this room to have ridiculous property tax values.
That's due to our friends in Springfield.
Did you, did you, you took a tremendous risk, sir, a tremendous risk.
With what?
With the public's money, with the taxpayer's money. You took a risk, right? You were betting on the fact that it was going to come, come out, correct? Just like you go to the horse races, you bet on a horse, you hope to have it, you don't understand.
All day long, you can try and stretch the emotional terms of our...
Hasta la vista, buddy.
Have a great day, next time we drive to city, stop by.
No, we don't like to.
I'll, I'll find you.
My name's John McCannon.
Mr. McCannon?
Hi there. I've been a proud resident of Orland Park for over thirty years. Glad to live here, I think our taxes are, are reasonable, don't like paying them, but compared to other towns, I think they're very reasonable to counter Mr. Traverse City. He's entitled to his opinion, I want to be the opposite of that. Now, a couple of things, we were talking about numbers, is there a certified audit? Is there a financial report where we can look at some numbers and, you know, not just kind of volley back and forth? That would be very helpful.
I think that's going to be publicly released, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that would be great. It was posted, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on our website.
I just wanted to kind of comment on, I have an MBA from DePaul University in finance, studied a lot of real estate case studies. Most of them probably were negative, were like, don't do this, here's a case study that you don't want to repeat. So, I just want to kind of counter the kind of well-intentioned...
Well, we have a copy of the case study here for you, so...
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm just, I'm telling you, it's successful.
For everyone where that's a raging success, there are raging failures also, just to kind of counter that. So, everybody getting a pat on the back, be careful, okay?
It's a copy for you.
I appreciate that. Anyway, I think this was much too risky, a venture back in 2010, 2011. I don't think the return on investment was worth the risk. I'm glad, I, I think they're going to vote on things and you're going to agree to this, let's get out, get out while we can. Trustee Dodge, I think you said, get out before things blow up, I agree with that. Let's don't do anything like this again. I certainly don't want to see us take this kind of risk. And I'm staying, I'm not moving, I have a house in Michigan, I'm not moving to Michigan, I'm staying here in Orland Park, so, I'm, just glad that you have an opportunity to make those comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Right.
Are there any other comments?
Do you have one? Do you have more?
Frank Zipic here, resident of Orland Park. I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, are there, were there any options other than selling? And I think that gets back to Pat's question. And then the second question is, are there any negatives to moving forward with the, you know, the new plan?
So, as far as options go, I believe, you know, they had the option to offer us a buyout. We don't have an option to go to somebody else because they're the owners of the property, so I think that's the first question that you asked. I think the second question is, is about going forward alternative. So, the alternative would be to get out like we are and doing what we said. The other alternative would be to stay in, which if we stayed in, sure, there's always the potential that property will be worth more, and they'll offer us more, there's that potential. But there's also the potential that the interest rates would go up, and then according to the terms of their deal, they can require us to refinance them where we can't get out. So, that's the terms of their deal. So, given the current situation, from my perspective, again, looking forward, I'm worried about the looking forward, this was the best alternative that we had on the, on the table for us going forward.
Just to build on that point, one of the major factors, there's no way interest rates aren't going to start to normalize and go back up. And as, as Mayor Pecow said, there's terms in this agreement that if they couldn't refinance by the agreement, we would then have to stay in this deal. So, this is, if we stayed in the deal and it continues to prosper and go well, then our cash flow and revenue would have gone up. The risk would have been, we would have been in the deal longer, we would have had all of that, that, that money tied up. So, getting out now, taking the tax increment financing, releasing some cash flow, balance in tax makes the most sense.
And, and the what happens? What happens if the market crashes and suddenly they're, they're only rented out at eighty percent? Now, all of a sudden, we're in a much worse position, so this, going forward, this seemed like the best opportunity, best opportunity in the, in the time to exit, and I think everyone here on the board agrees.
Yeah?
Sure.
Hi, Patrick Zamparelli, longtime resident, hi everybody, I know you all, and I, I know this has been a touchy situation for a lot of people, all right? But I personally, first off, want to say that I sell a lot of real estate in the area because our taxes are, you get a lot for your money in this area compared to surrounding towns, so, you know, I, I know the taxes are terrible in Illinois, but when it comes to this project, nobody's mentioned it. I kept hearing we got sixty-three to sixty-five million dollars into this, we're getting fifty-one million, fifty, no, fifty, fifty million, five hundred, did anybody counter them? Can't we counter them?
We did, and I actually alluded to that a little bit. We actually started negotiating with them, it was the beginning of October of 2016, and they had made an offer and we brought it to the board, and the board did reject that offer. They came back with a second offer, and the boards also said no to that one. So, this, we did do some negotiating back and forth and got them to increase the offer over time. In addition, during that time, we received additional excess cash flow from them and other revenues that we would not have had we taken that original offer. So, there was some negotiating that did occur.
Okay, that was pretty, much it, thank you.
Trustee Dodge, because I can't answer that because this deal was on the table when I got here.
So, yeah, the initial amount, let's call it sixty-three to keep the numbers easy, that was the initial mortgage, we're how many years, seven years in? They paid down, we had some of the cash flow, we've got the tax increment, so the value, the outstanding piece is what's left, that's essentially why we're getting fifty million close out. So, it's the way the deal was structured, but by analogy, like with your house, I'm going to start with a two hundred thousand dollar mortgage, and next number of years later, you got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage, that's kind of where we are. Okay, it's a more complicated deal than just a house mortgage, I'll be clear. Everybody understand, I'll give some examples.
My name is Millie, I live in Orland Park. I've got friends living in those apartments by the railroad tracks, they can't wait to get out of there. They said the condition in that building, they cannot wait to get out of there. We were told that that triangle was going to be high-end stores, right? That's what the deal was. And we get this huge University of Chicago hospital, right there on the corner, this huge block. Didn't turn out the way any of us thought it would turn out. And now my friend's family can't wait to get out of that building. You don't know what's going on in that building. It's not a good place to live.
We, we do currently, just, if I may, there is, the occupancy currently is over ninety-six percent, I think the last time we looked, it was about ninety-six point seven percent. And for certain units within that building, there is a waiting list, so there is a demand, a continued demand to live in that building.
Well, not according to my friend's family that, that does live there. And I think it would be advantageous to everybody in Orland if, when there's going to be a board meeting, if it could be announced in the newspaper what was going to be discussed, and that we'd be able to join in any conversation before the board cut and dried decides. I mean, I think that would be a big benefit to all of us, and I think the board really needs to work with Mayor Pecow, because the way it was going, he's the one that, he's, he's the knight in shining army for Orland Park.
Chairman?
Are there any other? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, for, for Millie there, we struggle often with trying to get word out what we're talking about, and I've been one of the people that always loves when we have crowds here, and I usually comment on it, and our board member comments at the end of the meeting. The problem with the newspaper is they go to bed before we have our agenda done. As many of our staff will tell you and our interim village manager, Joe LaMargo, we have, we're the first municipality to get a hundred percent transparency ratings from every institute that looks at us. But we don't even have our agenda typically done till late in the day Thursday.
Okay, then if you need to do it a day ahead of time...
Well, we can't, because there are things that we work on leading up to the board meeting. So, we do the best we can, which is to post it here, to put it on our website, but the newspapers already, the newspapers are already to bed before we ever have our agenda done. If there were another way to do it, we would, but it takes that long to put the agenda together for the next board meeting. This board meeting was just set last week, for example, so...
There's still no wisdom that can't be done ahead of time with all the deadlines to make, you just make the deadline work.
If, if I may, if I may, really quick on this, the, the website, I think we all acknowledge, I think it's in next year's plan to redo the website, it is hard to find information on the website, including the agendas. The only way that I can navigate to it is to do a Google search for agenda, so we're aware of the challenge, and it's something that in the next year I expect to be fixed so that that information is much more easily findable and you can be alerted. I know that there's some people that sign up for these alerts, and I was called today and said they didn't get alerted to this meeting. So, those are issues that we, we acknowledge exist and we're trying to fix.
How about the Facebook page? Wasn't on there, but I knew the department, the police department was looking for your people.
Mr. Chairman?
So, to the Facebook page, I don't see any reason why we can't post these things on the Facebook's page, we probably should. So, Joe, can we take care of that going forward? That's a real easy fix.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Ruzick.
Can I make a comment on the timing? We received our consultant's report in analyzing this deal last Wednesday, was the time that we saw it as a board. My understanding is, we would like to get this deal closed as po, as soon as possible, the developer has their financing in place, we would not go ahead with this approval until we had that independent consultant's report. It's my understanding they'll be willing to close possibly as early as this Friday. So, that was why there was kind of an expedited schedule, just to accommodate the developer being able to close it this Friday.
There was suspicion.
Well, there's nothing suspicious about it, that's, that's...
Hello, my name is Suna Batni, I have been a resident of Orland Park since nineteen seventy-two. I have actually lived in the old Orland section that was highly impacted, sorry, that was highly impacted by the Metro Triangle. In fact, most of my neighbors were adamantly against it. So, that being said, I also like to give a little bit, little background myself, I am a compliance manager, and one of the reasons I'm talking right now is because there's a lot of misunderstandings, I don't believe it's the board's fault. One of my jobs is to make sure that the everyday consumer can understand all the details. So, what I'm reading here and what I've heard here, and I, I have to set this down because I need my notes, so I will try to set...
You can sit down in the chair if you'd like.
Okay. So, one of the things that I, I heard here, the biggest, the biggest thing is the difference[1787.73] between what we've paid and what we're getting back. First of all, I'd like to say, I am totally for getting out of this. I wish we never got into it. So I am for getting, getting out of it. But one of my questions I'd like clarity, clarity on is, I don't, I was writing fast so I don't know if my notes are quick, but the outstanding balance of the loan that we have right now is 21, around 21 million and the bond is about 36 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're going to be getting about, with the sale of this, about 50.5 million?
Correct.
Can you explain what the financial advantage is of paying off, because I don't understand bonds, what the financial advantage is of paying off a lower amount of the loan versus the higher amount of the bond? Like what's the difference in the interest rate on the loan versus the interest on the bonds?
Okay. The interest rate on the loan is slightly lower than the average coupon rate on the bonds. The loan is completely callable. We just have to notify the bank five days in advance that we want to pay off the loan. General obligation bonds that are issued through a competitive sale are never, no, I shouldn't say never, are usually not callable for a certain period of time. And that's because the purchaser of the, of the bonds wants the assurance that they're going to be able to hold on to those bonds for a long enough period of time to generate the interest, which is the reason that they're buying them.
Okay.
So they don't want them to be callable. So our bonds were issued for a certain period of time, which was 10 years. We have large balloon payments at the end of the bonds where we pay a bigger payment at the end. They mature in 10 years. So because of that short maturity, there's no call provision in those bonds, in those bond issues. So that's why we technically cannot pay off those bonds at this time. So we'll pay off the loan. It is a lower interest rate, but I, but I think literally by a tenth of a point. So we'll pay that loan off. That frees up some of our funds that we currently utilize to make those payments. It reduces our debt, which is always good for a village's bond rating. It gives us some cash flow because the funds we were using to pay that loan will be freed up for other purposes. And then, like I said earlier, we'll set aside the additional amount to make those future bond payments as they come due. Bonds, usually you pay interest in June and then you pay principal and interest in December. So we'll have those funds set aside to make those future payments.
And I think the important thing here is if anyone doesn't understand callable, it basically means we can't pay it off early. So we have to, if you've had a mortgage or something that you couldn't pay off until a certain time, that's what that means.
Thank you. My next question, next question is, and we're selling this to another developer? Is that, or...
No, we're not. The developer that we entered into, and anytime anyone wants to interrupt, I don't need to be the one that's talking, but the developer that we entered into the RDA, into the redevelopment agreement with, they own the building. They own the structure. We own the underlying land. So the redevelopment agreement gave an option for them to take us out at 10 years. They're coming to us early and we're called, it's called a takeout. And they are actually going to pay all of their indebtedness to us and we're going to release the ground lease and turn over the underlying property to them and terminate the provisions of the RDA that relate to our financing agreement. I think Ken could probably speak to this. Certain terms of the redevelopment agreement need to stay in place because they're, they're like a usual development agreement terms. But those related to the financing and the ownership of it will terminate.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and I may not be, they would still be developing part of the land? Because that's my thought too, no.
No, they are done. They develop that property, that's all that they're going to develop. They're going to own the land underneath that building.
If I can jump in, they're, they're the developer, they, they're going to remain the owner. They're basically paying, if you will, paying off their debt to us through this buyout agreement is what they're doing. So they are, there's no other owners, there's nobody else that...
But it's just the land under the current building right now?
Correct.
It's really like when you own a home and you have a mortgage, you don't really have title to that home until you pay off the mortgage. So they're paying off their indebtedness to us and then they get title to the land.
Okay. So if we wanted to develop any other existing land that's there, is...
It's still, Orland Park is still part of the TIF district, it's still something that we have control over.
Yep. We're just selling the land underneath that building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Pat Nagel, I've been in the village now for 28 years. I got a question. We're going to get 50.5 and initially we've already gotten almost 8 million back from them, so we're about 58 million. We sell them the land. What happens if interest rates go up? We're anticipating all this money over the next 10 years. If he goes bankrupt, do we lose that money or do we have protection on that?
That we're out of it completely. And the TIF is essentially property tax for simplistic terms. So it's the property tax they've been assessed. So whoever acquires that land would be forced to pay us the property tax. Correct. We're completely out of it.
So no matter what happens?
That's, that's the reason, as we talked about, this is, from my perspective, we're significantly reducing our risk by exiting now.
Well, I think it's a good idea to get out now with what we've got and what we anticipate coming in over the next 10 years. We'll be ahead by 6.8 million. Biggest concern is if interest rates rise, which there probably will, and their rental goes down, if he has to file for bankruptcy, we have to wait for somebody who comes in and buys and pays the taxes back. I mean, that's the biggest risk that we face over the next 10 years.
Well, any building, I guess, in Orland Park, someone could go, could go bankrupt and someone else would have to come in. But from our perspective, we would be out of it, just like any other building in Orland Park.
And just if I can make a comment, that would, that risk would be there even if we stayed in the deal. Right, so...
And then we'd be on the hook for it. So that's one of the reasons why I think we all agree this is a good time to get out, because of the risk that we mitigate. Trustee Gira.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond with a comment about 9750 as well. I understand your friend may not be happy there. Oh, I'm sorry. But we do have a couple of village employees that also live in there with, one of them with young children, and they're very happy there. So I think it's like, you know, everybody has a different taste in where they, where they want to live, what fits their lifestyle. Many people are happier, wouldn't have that occupancy rate. The other thing I would like to mention is, there's an allusion, I think, to safety there. You kind of implied maybe?
Going on in the halls.
Okay, let me just say that I would refer you to the chief of police because in any apartment, any housing subdivision, whatever, there are issues that come up. But the chief of police is most supplied with the information. He is the one to refer and he has not got any concerns that he's ever made this board aware of. He meets with them regularly to make sure that they are on top of it. So, and because of the village's relationship with Flaherty and Collins, there's an open door so that the chief is able to go in there at any time without an excuse. So that's, again, your friends may, you know, what's acceptable for them might not be acceptable for someone else or reverse.
A lumpy guy.
I'm just saying it's different tastes, that's all.
It's not different tastes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other comments?
S A F E T Y, safety.
Hi, my name's Joe Zatar. How are you guys? So I don't really have an opinion on getting in or getting out of the deal, I don't really care, but I kind of interested in this transparency issue I think that this village is having. You guys getting the media package, you know, the day before it's released to the website and then making a decision before you come to the meeting, I think is what most of the village is upset about. You know, we're coming to a meeting extremely underprepared, way less prepared than you guys. You guys have been doing this deal for eight months. There was a deal being done on a theater project for the downtown area that was kind of decided before it was announced. I think that's the underlying issue the village is having. We want to be a part of the negotiations or part of the, and if there's a confidentiality issue, maybe you can just let us know, but if there's not, I think, you know, the village wants to know what's going on while it's going on and not after.
So I think that there is a confidentiality issue because it was, because this is confidential until we make a decision to bring it forward because you're in negotiation. So that's point number one. But I think your second point, too, making this information available once we decide that we're going to go public with it, I think we should. And I think it's, it's on the website, I believe, somewhere, but it's very hard to find. And that goes back to the comment I made previously, that we're aware of that problem and we need to fix it. And hopefully the Facebook thing can direct you to the right portion of the website for each of these meetings so that you can find those packages. That might be a way to help solve it.
So I have a question. Is, is Flaherty Collins the only one allowed by the terms of the agreement to buy out of this deal or can it be a competitive buyout?
Well, they're the developers, so I think they're the only ones with an option.
I'm sorry?
They're the only ones that have developed it, so there's no one else involved.
No one else would want to buy this mortgage out from under them? I mean, why do we have to sell it back to them? What's, what's the...
Well, they, they, they own the building. They own the actual development. We just own the underlying land.
They're selling the land back to them. Can we not sell the land to anyone? I'm just curious.
Well, but we'd only be able to sell the land.
We're the mortgage holder, not the, not the landowner. I guess it's the...
So you're saying that no one's in the, no one in this country is in the market to buy out land from under a developer? I think it happens all the time.
Mr. Chairman?
You know, my bank sold my mortgage to, you know, Fannie Mae, so...
And they, Flaherty and Collins has arranged their own financing.
Right.
I'm just curious. I don't know the answer.
They've got their own financing and the ground lease was put in place so that if this project didn't work, we owned the dirt. So the people of Orland Park, by definition, would be first in line to control the future of that development.
And now we're deciding to get out of the deal. Are they the only ones we're deciding to get out of the deal with?
We're getting out of the financing of the project business. If Flaherty and Collins sells this to another big developer or they want to sell the dirt that they're building...
No, I'm not asking what they would do. I'm asking, why can't we get out of the financing game to a different financer, not to themselves?
Mr. Chairman?
Because, you know, the gentleman asked about assessing the value of...
I can answer your question for you. We have a redevelopment agreement with Flaherty and Collins. When we loaned them that money, there was a very large document. That document allows them the option to take us out. They are exercising that option. No one else has that option. You're the owner, we're the bank.
So I assume that's why there's a confidentiality issue for the last eight months?
That's exactly, correct.
I'm going to add that in this agreement, they put out a big white bulletin, like mine, that has the agenda that they or the day before, so that everybody driving by can see it. And it totally costs $10,000.
Well, there's a 48-hour notice requirement, which, which we do. And as acknowledged, our website has some significant issues. And I think having, I think it was a good suggestion to add to Facebook, we're going to do that. And I know that in next year's budget, the website is redesigned, including this information. There's a ton of information. I can tell you, I ran for office. I found a lot of information on the website, but I found it through Google searches, not by searching the website. So we recognize there's a problem.
After this vote, will you all just...
Say that again?
The reports that you guys referenced, are they available?
It's available now, I believe.
Once, once the vote is taken, all the backup information will be released onto the website.
Okay.
So tomorrow morning.
Hi, I'm Kathy Quilty. I've been an Orland Park resident for 23 years and I for one don't feel our taxes are very high. It goes a lot to the schools, but who else can say that they have great schools like 135 and 230? So Village of Orland Park does get a little bit. Compared to the schools, it's nothing. So I want to set the record straight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Jennings. Just a couple of action items I'm going to request from you guys. Who prepares the agenda?
The clerk's office.
Okay. Is it possible they can make it a little bit more informative? It seems very plain, generic. So if you send this out, Mayor Pecow, I received your email two days ago that this was happening. Think it's a great resource. Anyone who has access to the internet, put your email address on here and you can get added to his email distribution. You'll find out, you'll receive an email when the next board meeting is. Second thing, anyone prepare meeting notes?
So the meeting minutes are also prepared by the clerk's office and usually they are approved at the following meeting and then they're posted online after that. How quickly, I don't know. What's the answer to that?
Once they're, they're posted, exited the day.
Okay.
So in a couple of weeks or...
So typically a meeting will be held and then the next meeting, the meeting minutes will be approved. And when they're approved, and then they may be amended as well. But whatever's approved is then amended and then put on. So usually the next day, those meeting minutes are there, which has everything that we discussed.
Great. Thank you.
Is there a chance we could ever rescind home rule? Where you guys, that are obligated to let the voters vote on the poll?
Ken, could you answer that question? I don't know that that, that's, that we have that option, but I'm not sure we want to turn over our home rule rights to the state of Illinois.
It requires a referendum.
Mr. Chairman, just for some clarification, home rule does not have anything to do with the voters deciding an issue. It gives us certain autonomous powers that we wouldn't have if we weren't home rule. As the mayor just mentioned, that would then, a lot of things would revert back to the county or the state. It allows us to do things as a village that we wouldn't be able to do without that authority. It has nothing to do with voters deciding an issue or not.
For example, we were able to opt out of the minimum wage. We were able to opt out of the sick pay. And I know some board members agree, some disagree, but we were able to opt out of those things because we're home rule. We're able to levy some of our own taxes, which we otherwise wouldn't be able to. So basically, it gives us protections against some of the things that the state or the county may be able to do.
And, and relating there, in our subposition issue, they were taking the vote. We had to vote.
So I want to give other residents a chance to speak.
Hi, I'm Bill Healy, a 40-year resident of Orland. I just, I've got a couple of things here I've scribbled down, but part of this development was, we took out Randys and Orland Bakery and all those other thriving, you know, good businesses. We've missed the sales tax and real estate taxes on those businesses. And I just wonder, I don't know how much we were collecting off them for a year or whatever, but when we say we're this much better off, we should look at what we had before, at the cash flows from there and the employment from there. I, I, I mean, I hope we're better off, but I can't say that for sure.
If I could just make a few comments, some of those businesses are relocated in the Village of Orland Park, so they are still generating property taxes and sales taxes. That entire TIF area, that TIF district where the village owns the land and the development is being, the development is occurring, the value of that, the taxable value of that at that time was less than what it is now from one development. So we've really increased the value to the entire village by redeveloping that area. And for example, the, the value of the entire area was $9.6 million, the taxable value. The taxable value of just the 9750 building is about 11.5. So that will, in the end, generate a significantly larger amount of property taxes for the village. And since the village has kept its levy flat or consistent for a number of years, that reduces everybody else's tax bill.
It's just when we compare, we're looking at profits, we're this much ahead. I think the baseline should, the beginning baseline should be considered too. The, and I'm not sure if, and maybe you could tell me, does University of Chicago pay real estate tax?
They do not pay real estate taxes, but they pay, it's kind of like a pilot payment in lieu of taxes. They do pay a ground lease to the village of $770,000 a year. And I believe that's for a term of up to 25 years. So we do generate that revenue from that development. So, we do generate that revenue from that development. If at any time, that becomes a taxable parcel, then obviously, they'll pay property taxes, and that lease payment will go down.
Okay.
CDAs is taxable.
Yeah, CD, that small portion will be taxable.
My second thing was that, you know, just as a financial professional, I would say that we should never have taken on this risk of this debt, of this magnitude. I agree with putting out money for incentives and that, but this is too much money to put out. I do not understand the, why the financial reports and all this, as everybody's been saying, hasn't been brought out sooner. I mean, here we are at this meeting, and we're a, we're in the 22nd, 21st century, and it's, we should have had, even over the weekend, to have some of these financial reports and other advisors out there, available to the public.
To that point, if I can just respond, wasn't this posted on the website on Friday for the agenda item?
Yes.
My, my... I'm talking about the details, the financial...
Well, no, the Peluski's report, that, that report was posted as part of the agenda item.
Agenda, correct.
So, it was, Bill, posted on Friday.
Well, then, you know, it's, maybe it wasn't as obvious for an old guy like me.
But it was, it was. It was posted out there.
Do we, I still wish there's be more time to give the people a chance to understand what the hell you guys are doing with this big amount of money for this. I look at rushing this meeting, rushing the closing, rushing all this without, you know, we just don't understand why there's no appraisal, no second thought. If this were nonprofits and all this, everybody I know gets an appraisal for their second opinion as to the value. I don't know if we have one, or if it's a legitimate one, or how is this, how is that determined that this is a sound price? You guys are relying on somebody's report, obviously. I just, it'd be nice if we could see it and rely on it, too. Another thing is the $6 million profit. You give me 60 million for five years, I mean, it's, it sounds like a 10% return, but it's actually 1%, 1% for 10, I mean, over 10 years. It just doesn't, it's not that much money, considering the risk that you took, it's not a lot of money with that, and the numbers are kind of dubious, in my opinion, anyway. No appraisal, but I will have to say, I agree, get out of this thing. The real estate is at a high right now, and it could turn in the next week, the next couple of weeks or whatever, and you'd be left-handed in the bag, despite all the, and just get out of this thing. And that's just my opinion. Real estate's at a high. I've talked to some, a couple of real estate tax professionals, and they said, it's at a high. Now's the time to get out. A year from now, you'll never be able to do it. So, I, I agree with your decision to get out, and let's pay off the debt as soon as we can. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Healy. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Jack Craven. I'm a resident for 27 years, and I feel bad because there's a lot of other people who've been here longer. This was a bad deal to begin with, and many of you heard me speak about this a few years ago. We shouldn't be in the real estate business. But this is a great opportunity for us to get out of a very bad deal. It's still very scary what went on, and how this thing got approved to begin with. And I look at many of the board members here and find you guilty of getting us into this mess. I'm just fortunate we can get out of this mess very easily. The situation is also, there's a lot of anger you hear in the room. We saw a lot of anger last November with the elections. We saw a lot of anger this spring with the turnover. We need greater transparency. I think we're seeing it here. Hopefully, we're on the right path. I just look at all you to support it, and the thing about it is, is that we're a very conservative area within Co County, which is very unusual, as you know. But the thing about it is, we got a lot of people who are passionate, a lot of people who care, and we're looking at you to make the right decisions and not to be in the real estate business.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Any other comments from the board?
Can I make one more, please? Can you indulge me? I just came into possession of like a summary of some numbers, and it looks like the discounted cash flow is like $4 million. So, somebody's throwing around $6 million of profit. I agree with the gentleman who just said, that's not a good return for the risk we put into this project. And in present value, your MBA son would certainly understand that, that present value, $4 million bucks, that's a real number on cash, not $6 million.
Thank you. Any other comments?
For the record, I handed them that sheet because it's public information. There's nothing to hide here, as we've all agreed to. It's plenty, folks, I get, who don't like the deal. I hear you, very clearly. And as you heard us talk about, at this particular junction, in this particular contest, it's precisely the right thing to do to get out. Do I wish we could have squeezed them harder? Hell, yeah. They also had the negotiating leverage in the RDA, that if they forced us to stay in the deal, we would have been less happy. So, it's time to get out with it.
And any, any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
I just have a comment to Millie. One of the things that we have in place is called the Rental Housing Authority, that the police department is involved in, Development Services is involved in, and that covers all of our rental property within the Village of Orland Park residential rental property. And with 9750, they do meet, Joe, is it once a month, or they meet with staff once a month, their staff and our staff, to go, go over any concerns. And as Trustee Gira said, if you have any concerns, you can call Chief McCarthy, or you can call Development Services. And I have several friends that do live there also.
And any other comments? Okay, so my, my only final comments, because it came up here, is one is, these complaints, these issues are legitimate issues that, that we as a board should address as, whether it's the website, whether it's putting things on Facebook, et cetera, and I think we, we are doing a good job of trying to do that. The point was made about the state of Illinois, and Trustee Dodge made this comment, the state of Illinois just passed a significant tax increase that affects us all, and they did nothing to take a dime out of the budget, not a single dime.[1685.25]